All right, so I am going to make a motion to open tonight's meeting at 5:21. We have Lisa there, so I don't need to appoint a clerk for it. Tim, can I have a motion to, well, I'll have a motion to open the meeting at 5:21?
So move.
Second. Holly, all in favor?
Aye.
I will move to go into executive session to discuss real estate contracts, to seek legal advice, and discuss the employment history of particular persons. Can I have a second for that?
Second.
And matters of health and safety, I should add that as well. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Okay, we can list that we are going into executive session as of 5:21. All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for everyone for attending tonight's meeting of the Board of Education. The Board has been in executive session since 5:00, approximately 21 this evening, discussing the employment history of particular persons, seeking legal advice, discussing real estate contracts, and matters of public safety, health, and security. Can I have a motion to reopen the public meeting at 7:45?
I move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, second from Hillary, I think. All in favor?
No, that was me.
Oh, Vicky, yes. I saw Hillary's hand but heard Vicky's voice. So from Vicky. All in favor? Aye. We're back in session. Can everyone please rise or just put your hand over the heart for your pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag led by Holly McCall, I'm sorry.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. Nation indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral. I can see from our Zoom that we have a lot of attendees tonight, which is great. I just wanted to read a statement that some of you may not have heard before, which is that the meeting is closed to in-person public attendance due to Governor Cuomo, who has allowed public bodies, including school boards, to fulfill their obligations to conduct business in the public eye without permitting in-person attendance by the public, quote, "provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceedings, and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed." So that is why, obviously, due to the coronavirus pandemic, that we are Zooming our meeting tonight. When we get to public comment, I will repeat again that we have worked out a manner in which people can comment by being promoted from an attendee to a panelist. You will need to raise your hand, and Adam will help work through that, but we'll get to that down the road. I just wanted to start this evening and say thank you to everyone who's joining us remotely, that this is three weeks into our distance learning and having our third board meeting via Zoom. As our governor and president have recently stated, the next two weeks could be the worst of it for us here in New York. So I implore all of you to continue to stay safe by staying home and to do your part to help flatten the curve so that we can reunite in person, hopefully on the earlier end of current projections. Again, I really want to applaud our administrators, faculty, and staff. I think if anyone in this country did not fully appreciate their children's teachers before, they certainly do now. Our staff continues to go above and beyond, and our gratitude is endless. I will say that we have gotten a preview of what is going out to our families tomorrow in terms of the remote district learning possibilities for the next week and a half. And it really is mind-boggling and mind-blowing, the amount of time and effort that Adam and our entire team of administrators have put into putting this together for our families. We know it's a challenging time, but we are incredibly, incredibly lucky to have the people working for us that we do. Excuse me. I also want to encourage anyone with healthcare workers or first responders in their families to reach out and assist them in any way, to make sure to thank all the individuals. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I've got a frog in my throat, in our community who continue to work to provide us with food and essential services and to do anything we can to reach out and help each other. There really are a lot of people in need right now, and we all have an obligation to help those who are struggling. I know many of you out there have unanswered questions, and we will do our best to provide answers with the best information we have at this time. I know that tonight Christine will be discussing our scheduled spring break for next week and how Governor Cuomo's executive order has impacted that. I will let her describe this in detail for you, but please know that a message will be going out to the community tomorrow after tonight's meeting. As for tonight's meeting, this is an extra meeting that was added to our calendar to discuss possible alterations to the 2020-2021 school budget that was originally proposed. As we often state, budget planning begins in October, and the budget that gets presented each April is a culmination of many hours of work, creating a budget that is fiscally responsible, yet also maintains the standards of education and the standards of facilities and services that this district, that all of us in this district have grown accustomed to. But this year is different. The coronavirus pandemic has forced all of us to face a new reality and to address new challenges with imperfect and ever-changing information and guidelines. The governor's final state budget, which is due April 1st of each year, was altered. Some information came out right before this meeting, which will be discussed. And for the first time ever, the governor has talked about being able to adjust these numbers quarterly that affects our state aid, which means that all school districts do not know the amount of state aid that they can count on for next year. And Governor Cuomo's office stated last week that school districts should be prepared for significant reductions in state aid. The obvious implications for our annual budget are apparent, and it is under this backdrop that the Board of Education asked our superintendent and our administrators to come up with a number of different budget scenarios. This is the reason for our board meeting tonight, and this is what we will be discussing. I would also like to mention that pursuant to an order from the governor, our budget vote and our school board and library elections have been delayed. They cannot take place before June 1st of this year. We will be sending out information on this and a new date when any and all details have been finalized. This, as we all feel, really needs to happen ASAP, and we are assuming that we will get additional guidance in the next several days. Another item that I wanted to mention tonight before moving into the budget presentations in the superintendent's report is that school districts around the county continue to support each other and share information. The Westchester-Putnam School Board Association, of which our own Vicky Tipp is the president, has been holding weekly town calls to allow board presidents from Westchester and Putnam Counties to talk about how they are addressing distance learning, budgets, state mandates, school calendars, grading and testing, meal distribution, childcare, and many other issues that have become complicated as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. We're very fortunate to be in the district that we are. We have tremendous resources at our disposal and have been way ahead of the curve on all of this, while many other districts are still struggling. There will be another call tomorrow that Vicky and I will be on. We will continue to share information on what we are doing here and what we all feel still needs to be done and decided statewide so that we can continue to provide our students with the best education and services under the current circumstances. And lastly, one more mention tonight about the census. Filling this out directly affects education dollars coming into our district, so please log on to 2020census.gov, and while you're staying safe and staying inside, please fill out the census. And that's the president's report for tonight. Christine?
Thank you, Jane, for your supportive words, and I just want to take a moment before we begin by discussing the executive order regarding remote instruction for next week, that the administration and the faculty have been supported tremendously by this community as we had transitioned to virtual instruction. And I appreciate the patience and the understanding and the advocacy and the outreach that our families have shown to the district. As we all know, we all struggle in our own lives trying to help support our children and support education differently and do our work from home. And I know that's a heavy lift for so many of us, so I just want to acknowledge that as we move into the budget presentation and how we're going to handle remote instruction next week. So I do want to offer my sincere gratitude. So as Jane had mentioned, at the end of last week and then with, on Monday, further clarification was provided from the State Ed Department, that the governor has an expectation that remote instruction continues even through scheduled spring breaks and holidays. So that provided a unique challenge for us in this district. And so when we heard that executive order, we had to think about a couple different aspects of our own unique community here and what that meant for us. So the first, we know that next week, a lot of our families are going to be engaged in celebrating the holidays, and that's why spring break is usually placed in this particular part of the calendar. We also need to be mindful of our contract to our faculty and the number of days in the contract that a faculty can, that they work. So we have to think about making sure that we don't exceed that. We had to think about how important it is for our students to have structure in the midst of this evolving health crisis. And then we also needed to honor people that feel like they need a chance to recharge based on everything that's been happening around us. So as a result of that, under Adam's leadership, the PD team, which is composed of teachers and administrators, launched into a way to make sure that we're honoring the remote instruction executive order, but also acknowledging all of the moving pieces that I had just mentioned to you that we need to be thinking about as we tackle what next week could and should look like for our district. So I'm actually going to turn this now over to Adam, and he's going to explain to the board and to the community, you know, what our thought process is behind what April 6th through April 13th can look like. And before we do that, I want to just share with you that the proposed calendar now will read that spring break has been removed from our calendar commentary, and we've replaced that with student remote instruction days by the executive order in the language that was given to us by the governor. So now I just want to transition into what student remote instruction will look like over those next six days.
Thank you, Christine. So the first part that we wanted to acknowledge is that some students will have some carryover work, work that was previously assigned or work that they may have to catch up on. We think this is especially true for many of our students at Greeley, but certainly could be true for other students across the district. So that is certainly a piece of work that would potentially continue for students as they go through next week. We also just wanted to share or reshare our bounce boards. So for parents and students that feel that students should get a little more practice or some enrichment, we did publish bounce boards just a few weeks ago to parents. We had had some requests for opportunities for some enrichment and some extra practice as we got iLearning up to speed. So we've produced bounce boards for all of the different grade level bands from kindergarten all the way up through eighth grade. And our students are familiar with these platforms because they use them in a variety of our programs in our classrooms. Some of them are subscription programs and others are free programs online. But those were shared, and we will reshare those tomorrow with some correspondence out to the community. We've also developed some new activities that we hope students and parents will explore next week that we're calling adventure boards. In these adventure boards, you can see some examples here. We tried to put some things on there that we felt were a nice balance of educational activities, but also opportunities to connect with other family members and also explore kind of low-tech and high-tech opportunities. So you'll see things like write your own book and read it to your class or your family, take a walk and photograph the journey, things like that. There's have a paper airplane flight contest and measure how far it flies, et cetera. So just some activities that we felt that all students could engage in regardless of what kind of materials they may have at home. And we've tried to level those so they're appropriate for age level appropriate, grade level appropriate for the different grades, all the way from kindergarten through eighth grade. So those are some of the opportunities that we hope students will take advantage of. Here's just a blown-up view of the adventure board, so you could take a look. And again, those will be shared tomorrow with the community. We also are going to make sure that we push out physical education activities. So our Director of Athletics, Mr. Simo, has been pushing out activities onto YouTube, onto our Chappaqua YouTube channel, so our families in the community, our students can continue to stay physically active. So next week, we plan to push out a physical education family challenge each day through next week and following Monday, so we'll post those. We hope folks take advantage of those. This is just a screenshot of the YouTube channel, the Simo family generously jumping in and modeling that physical education from home. So the bulk of next week, kind of the, a big chunk of this, we're hoping to spend time on these passion projects, and we created three different lanes of passion projects. Passion projects is a takeoff of some of the companies that allow employees to have chunks of time that they explore a particular passion. And so that has caught on in education, and we created three different lanes of passion projects. We have one that's Chappaqua's Got Talent, one that's a Hackathon lane, and one that's a Chappaqua Helps Lane, which is about volunteerism. And we've created project sheets for each one that, again, we're going to share. The left one you see is about Chappaqua's Got Talent. We're hoping that students identify some talents in themselves or budding talents that they feel that they have and spend time practicing those talents. They may consider sharing those talents or teaching others how to develop those talents. So that's the Chappaqua's Got Talent board. And we've got the Hack a Problem board. You don't have to look very far now in the local community or even globally to identify problems that we think that our students could potentially solve and can contribute to the solution for. So hacking a problem is a second option, and you can see a description there. We've also provided some scaffolding in the way of workbooks, which provide kind of step-by-step for the different grade levels to be able to tackle these things. And then the last one we have here is Chappaqua Helps, which is really just about a spirit of volunteerism that students could engage in to help out with a variety of people that may need help, especially in this time of crisis. So we tried, one of our goals was to have activities designed so that students anywhere from kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade could engage in these activities at an age-appropriate and grade-appropriate level. We also tried to use things that they were familiar with, like you'll see the design thinking process, which we have and we use all the way through our K-12 program, and all of our students are familiar with it. So we use that design thinking process as scaffolding to, or a framework to tackle these problems. So we hope that students will engage in these things. They're optional activities, but we hope the students will engage in any one of them, if not more. And then we hope to have like a virtual exhibit where they can display what they've learned or the problem that they've solved, what they've built, display their talent, and then we'll have an opportunity to give some curated feedback the week after next. So we've created a website, and I'll show that website to you in just a minute. We're going to push that out again tomorrow as well with some links to the community, but the website has a variety of resources. It includes all of the things that I've just shared with you and as well as some others. So we're trying to create just a one-stop, a one-stop location for parents to be able to go and get the information that they need and also students to be able to get the information that they need. An additional part of this is we want to make sure that students have access to teachers. So if they need some support or they need help or they need a thinking partner that they can jump in and Zoom virtually and interact with some of our educators. So we are in the process of developing a schedule where we will have Zoom opportunities for students at each level, elementary, middle, and high school. We'll also have administrators available, and we're working hard to make sure we have some extra supports available as well so we can ensure that all of our students have access to this opportunity. So we will publish that as part of our website as well. So those are the, those are the project options that we have altogether, the different educational opportunities. As Dr. Ackerman said, this is an opportunity for families to make some decisions about where they need to spend their time and how their children will potentially be spending their time. And we tried to lay out a whole bunch of choices so that parents could choose to engage and students could choose to engage in a variety of ways and find their best fit for their family. So before I close, I would like to share our website with you, just so you can take a preliminary look at it. It's still a work in progress, and we plan to continue to load things up onto this website as we go through the weekend. We get feedback, but you can see it's an iLearning dashboard. We've got a dropdown here with some parent resources. We've got Dr. Ackerman's video that she sent out to the community last week. Then we have each of the project boards. They're clickable, so you can zoom in and see the content on each of the boards. Short description. We're also going to post those office hours with Zoom links on the passion projects. And we've got our physical education challenges, which we will populate by day. And then we have our bounce boards and our adventure boards. So we have a whole dashboard of activities that students and parents can engage in. So we hope that it will be a nice productive week where parents and students can make some choices about how they're going to balance leaning into their continued iLearning and also a potential opportunity to take a little bit of a break and have some downtime. And that's all I have.
Maybe we could take some questions from the board about the plan for next week?
Yeah. How do I raise my hand here?
Comments? We can hear you, Warren.
Okay. Thank you, Jane, for your comments at the beginning. I know as a district, we try and do some very good things, and we do do very good things. We're not arrogant enough to know that we know everything. We don't know everything. We're learning here also. But I wanted to thank, I got some feedback. But I wanted to thank Dr. Ackerman, Dr. Pease, for sharing what we're doing with other districts that might not be as far along as we are. We got a good jump on this, thanks to our administration and Josh Kowal-Block. But I believe that as a district that has resources that we should be sharing with other districts that might not have as many resources. So thank you, Christine and Adam, for doing that and for the entire administrative team to make sure that not only are we showing thought leadership with our own community, we're showing thought leadership across the area.
Thank you. I just, I'd like to say that districts are approaching this in all kinds of different ways. So I feel like Adam and his team has put together a plan that kind of balances out feedback we've been hearing throughout the community about, you know, wanting students to remain engaged and other parents wanting students to have a substantial break, but also honoring the idea of moving forward with remote instruction, but also doing it in a different way to sort of honor that departure from school that we typically have at this point during the school year. So I think that his team has done a really nice job at putting together a plan for the community that reflects different aspects of the community and helps support families based on where they are in their own personal world right now, which is different across this district. So I just want to acknowledge that, and I want to thank Adam again for leading that effort.
I guess the only question... Oh, sorry, go.
Go ahead.
Okay. I just also want to thank the whole admin team for just incredible work. I think we're really far ahead, and I think Warren said it right when he said, "We really don't know everything. We're really learning as we go along." But comparatively, we are in really amazing shape. I think, you know, we had our one-on-one initiative over a couple of years, the last couple of years, which was very, very fortunate. And I just want people to know that we have a team, an administrative team here that works truly night and day, you know, sometimes from the wee hours of the morning until late at night. So the amount of work that goes into this is really why we have such incredible results, plus the resources that we're fortunate enough to have. I just want to say that I, and we fully recognize that this iLearning is going to be different for everyone, obviously. Some people really appreciate the structure. I mean, it has to be done. We have to provide instruction. But I fully recognize that for some families, it's going to be a real, it's a real challenge depending on what kind of learner you have. So I just want to recognize that this is also not easy on our parent community. And so we appreciate everything that you're doing and you're trying to do for your kids and in partnership with us, and we all just want to keep learning how to do better together.
Hillary, go ahead.
I am echoing what everybody else has said and also just to acknowledge also to our parents, who, there are actually a lot of you watching, that this is hard, and we know it's hard, and we're all in it in different ways with you, and and we appreciate the feedback that we're getting, and we, you know, hope that you are enjoying distance learning as much as it's, you know, an obvious departure from what we're used to. But I just wanted to acknowledge to the community that we know that this is a really hard transition. And in terms of a question, the only thing, I was sort of wondering if we can explain to our parents who might have questions is to what extent, if any, will the kids be evaluated based on the distance learning that's going to be happening over the week formerly known as spring break?
So we're looking at this more of an enrichment model where there would be a showcase of work that students engage in if they choose to participate. That is not, I'm talking about remote learning in this way. Throughout the history of time, there have been courses at the high school that have assigned work over spring break. That is not what we're addressing here. There are a lot of AP classes where kids have assignments, and that wouldn't, that that practice would exist regardless of whether or not we were in school. So we're really just talking about what we presented tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, I know. I just wanted to make sure that was clarified for parents.
What I would just like to say is, I, you know, echoing what other people said about the parents, we are so appreciative of the patience and understanding that the parents are showing us. And just to let you know that we, we're all in different stages with our kids and our families, but we know that this is so difficult. Every family is facing something different. Just because we may say to you, "We are so ahead of the curve," and we look at this work on the other side of the board table that's presented and that Adam and Christine and Josh and everyone's come up with, and we're just, we're stunned that they could pull this together in such a, you know, such a high-level way in such a short period of time. But that doesn't mean that they don't have their own families to worry about. And there, you know, there's, there are very, very many people here doing their jobs with, you know, kids running around in the background, and people aren't getting a lot of sleep, and everyone is trying to do what they can. So we just want all the families to know that we realize that just because we're saying like, "Wow, we have a good situation here," that doesn't mean we think it's easy. And we just want to sort of give some perspective. You know, it was really enlightening for Vicky and I to be on a call last week to talk about districts that are much more challenged. They don't have devices. Homes don't have Wi-Fi. Their huge numbers of their students are in poverty. We also have families that struggle here, and our district is doing everything they can to help them. I just really am very proud of everything that the faculty and administrators are doing and under just constantly changing circumstances. And I also just want to say that we understand that people do have a lot of questions. There is a lot of confusion because the information is changing on a constant basis, and it's incomplete. And so everyone is trying to push it out to our families as best as possible and just to let all the families know that if there are continued questions about learning, as much as they can reach out to, obviously, their own teacher or their building principal, et cetera, if they have comments or questions, they can reach out to the board, and we will direct people to the appropriate person. So I just think everybody's working really hard to get as much information out as possible. So thank you.
Jane, can I just add a little bit here?
Sure, of course.
So I absolutely agree with everything that I, that everybody else on the board has said. And I really want to echo again, though, the thanks to the families for their patience with everyone as we go through this learning curve in the middle of a very stressful situation. And I know everybody's in a different place, but I'm really glad that we have such support from our parents and the teachers and the administration to move forward with this kind of brave new world of distance learning and continuing to aim high and do this with excellence like we do everything else. So I just want to say an extra thank you to Adam and his professional development team, who I know have been working pretty much around the clock, trying to... pretty much around the clock, trying to comply with, get us in a place where we can comply with the new orders, which seem to be coming fast and furious on an almost daily basis. So I just want to say thank you and say, you know, we're, we're here. Let us know how things are going because, uh, you know, it, it looks one way when we sit on this side of the board table, but when you're out there living it, sometimes it feels a little bit different. So please, you know, stay in touch. And I'm really glad to see so many people watching our meetings. I don't think we've ever had this many people in the academic commons.
It's good to see all the attendees. It, it makes me smile. So I'm, I'm glad everybody's watching and will hopefully continue to provide you with some good information tonight. Does, does anybody else have any questions or comments about Adam's presentation?
Okay, so in terms of communication, push this out to the faculty because we'd like to have some, uh, an opportunity to plug some faculty into those, those instructional, remote instructional support spots before we push this out to the larger community, but it'll be out to the families tomorrow by 12:00 noon.
Oh, Christine, I did actually have one question for you. If you could just talk a little bit to how, how attendance is or isn't being tracked throughout this distance learning process and, you know, do, is, is it just about what students are engaged in or is there some other method?
So the way we're recording attendance in our eye learning plan that's been sent out to parents is they're reporting if their students aren't able to engage in the work as absent because they're sick. So they, they have a contact, every building has a contact person.
Right. But I meant a little bit more for next week. What are the expectations? The same?
Well, our whole process next week is going to be one of engagement if students choose to engage in that work around remote learning. So let me talk offline with the leadership team about what makes sense and I'll put that in our communication tomorrow morning to families.
Yeah, thank you. I think it would be nice to kind of give them an answer before they ask.
Yeah, sure. Okay, so we'll, we'll move on to the budget presentation then. All right, so as you know, we've been working off of, if you could just move the slide, Adam, a budget increase of 2.75% and a levy increase of 2.74%. Now, normally in the middle of the budgeting process, we don't have to make a major adjustment up, but obviously we're in a completely different situation here because of what's been happening in the economy due to coronavirus. So Adam, if you could just move the slide. So the things that we know, we still know, they haven't, they haven't changed over time. So we still know what our projected enrollment is. We still know our contract obligations, our debt service, our health insurance premiums, CPI, the tax cap number. These things haven't... But now we have an added unknown. And the added unknown is the long and short-term impact of the coronavirus on our community. And state aid and the way that the governor is talking about state aid is very different than what we've ever experienced in the past. And when we go to the revenue portion of this presentation, John's going to articulate that a little bit more for the community. Go ahead. So originally, if you saw in our budget presentation on March 3rd, you could see our progression over time. And typically, our budget has been between like a 0.5% and a 3%. So our, our 2.75% increase wasn't out of the norm of what, of the context of the budget over the course of many years here, but obviously now we have to relook based on the context in which we're living. So what we had done was, in our original proposal, we had some additional positions and some reductions. In the addition, we're going to address some of the instructional areas that we felt needed to be enhanced over the course of the next academic year based on our experiences this year. And Adam had presented those in his instructional presentation. And then we also had to add in some positions that we added to the budget after the budget was approved last year, such as the, the SRO, right? So what we did was we took a hard look at all of our additions and then we came up with three tiers for your consideration tonight that would help guide the remaining budget process for us in the district. So these tiers are kind of in order of maybe impact on the school community. So what we did was we looked to see in our first tier, what are some ways that we could reduce the budget without directly impacting instruction? So in this first tier of reductions, in our budget every year, we have an extra position in case we have an unknown happen in the course of the year. So for example, if we have a bunch of students who come in and they need English language service, services that we didn't anticipate and it requires us to add another person, we usually have a floater in the budget just in case that happens. And I use the analysis example because that's the one wildcard area that could be triggered by a small population of students coming in due to the level of services that they require for support. So that's where we often would use a contingency position. And then we cut some of our operations maintenance budget. We, we are deferring some work on the West Orchard roof and we're going to patch it instead of replace certain sections. And then we made some reductions in some other areas. So in the first tier, we're able to pull a million dollars out, approximately a million dollars out of our original proposal. And I'll show you what that looks like on the, on the levy in, in a minute. And then we did second tier reductions. So in our second tier reduction, we removed the new assistant principal, assistant principal, we were going to add at Greeley because Adam had described for you how we were looking at adding four assistant principals at Greeley next year to help administratively support this particular building because, because of the demands and the needs of the Greeley community. We had talked about, we have one AIS enriched, split between the two middle schools. In our original budget, we had added another position. So each, so Bell and Seven Bridges would have their own enrichment AIS math teacher. We took that position out of the budget. We reduced our field trips. We reduced some of our other budget lines. We reduced our supplies. So our second tier reductions save about $580,000. So Adam, if you could move the slide. So if we chose to move forward with our tier one reductions or our, a combination of tier one and tier two reductions, we get our levy under 2%. So obviously, if we go with both tier one and tier two, the levy's lower. It's under 1.5%. If we go with just tier one reductions, we're about at 1.86% with a levy increase of 1.73%. Then I, we did an analysis of what it would look like if we had a 0% increase. So I want to share that with you right now. So if we went to a 0% increase and reduce about 3.5 million from the budget, this is when we really start cutting into the instructional experiences of our kids. So in this, in this model, we'd have to reduce eight faculty members. We'd have to reduce an administrative position. We'd have to reduce custodians. We'd have to reduce some of our, a secretary, our aides. We'd have to cut back on our modified sports program. And then we'd have to reduce some of the security here at Greeley. So I just wanted to model what this would look like for you. So in this scenario, it would be all of the reductions in tier one, all of the reductions in tier two, and then there'd be a third level of reductions, which is what's in front of you right now. And that would get us to a place where we would have a negative levy increase and a 0% increase in, in our budget. Adam, if you could move the slide, that'd be great. So we have some anticipated savings from this year and this is all, you know, contingent on when our, if we are able to return or not. But these are just some ways that we feel like if we were to have to remain out of school, we'd be able to maybe recoup some of our, our money in, in the budget because we wouldn't be operating at our, at our, at our full capacity. And then we also, if you could just, talked about some potential revenue, revenue shortfalls now that have developed based on where we are with the, because of the coronavirus. So in this, in this slide, and we'll talk more about this in the discussion part of the presentation. We, obviously based on the governor's commentary, we're concerned about mid-year state aid cuts. We're concerned about sales tax. Obviously, there are summer academic programs. We don't know if we can run them. We're concerned about our interest in our earnings and we're concerned about some of our, the, the rental revenue that we receive. And just for everyone's, so everyone's looking at the same information, just to jog everyone's memory, I just want to show you how we primarily receive our revenue to run the district. So a majority of it comes from our, our tax base, from our families. And then the next portion of it that is considerable is our state aid. Adam, if you could. All right. So things that I think we need to talk about tonight, and, and this is where John will come heavily into this discussion. I'd like him to begin by sharing with you his analysis of what came out of Albany today, is I'd like to talk about, you know, the reductions in tier one and tier two and some issues that we need to be thinking about in terms of where we should, how we should move forward with the budget development process. Now, in, in Jane's report, she had mentioned that the budget election and, and the budget vote and the, the election are going to be moved out until June. So what that does for us is it buys us another meeting. So what we're able to do now is have this discussion tonight. And then on the 15th, instead of putting a budget in front of the board for adoption, we can make some adjustments based on your discussion around this, um, this presentation. And then we can have an additional meeting at the end of April to, to adopt, where I can recommend a budget for you for adoption. So we, I don't want you to feel like we need to come out of here tonight with a decision. What we need to come out of here with is some guidance on how to move forward. So I have something more tangible to present to you in the community on the, on the 15th. And then at that meeting, I will probably recommend that we have an additional meeting to, for your consideration to adopt like the, the final budget. So John, at this point, do you think you can talk a little bit about, you know, what, what your analysis is out of what, what came out of Albany today?
Yes. And just today, the, the governor and, uh, the two, two head of the legislators, they, they reached an agreement. But the key here is that both houses have now approved the, the budget. They have now passed the budget. So what we did was that we got another new run. All the school district got a new run. And what we, the comparison that we can see compared to the governor's budget is that we have a reduction of $170,000 already. And they are saying that this is come because we're going to get federal stimulus money. But we haven't been informed of that. So I'm not sure, uh, you know, what exactly this really means. But also the, I, I think Christine already talked about, for the next school year, the governor's is going to reserve the rights to make quarterly adjustment to the state aid. So, and the previous slide, you see that the state aid is a very large chunk of our revenue, about $10 million. And, and right here is 9.9 million. So, you know, the, the $2 million we put here, I would just tell you, it's not an estimated number. It's probably more of a guessing number. And Christine, do you want me to talk about the other parts or?
Yes, sorry, yes.
Okay. The sales tax, you know, this year we increased our sales tax number to 1.3 million dollars. This is the fourth item here, the tax revenues. The reason is because last August in Westchester, you probably can recall that we increased, well, we didn't increase the, the state approved the, the increase of 1% sales tax. And we were slated to get $400,000 additional in, uh, sales tax. But what right now we are all concerned about is that I don't think that too much sales going on right now. And the sales tax that we get is really based on the, the sales in Westchester. And Christine already talked about summer academic commons. So the interest, we made the majoring adjustment to the interest income because we, we were enjoying about 1.35% of interest income for, for a period of time. And we thought that this is the time we really need to make adjustments, increase the revenue. But suddenly, um, the interest rate for, for the Fed went to zero. So we're really concerned about the interest earnings. And then the rental of real property equipment, this amount, the 30,000 is the summer agreement that we have with the town, town of Newcastle. So we don't know whether or not they're going to run the program. If they don't run the program, we're not going to get 30,000 of the rental property fees. Christine, I'm done.
Yeah. So can you, Adam, can you go back to the last slide? So, um, things, the other two pieces on here that, um, I just, I think it warrants mentioning before we start talking about, you know, where we're going to go here is what we do this year with our levy impacts our levy limit next year because of the calculation. So I just want that to be back in the back of everybody's mind. And, and, and so the other piece of this is, you know, some, we, we are, and we continue to be concerned about Greeley and the security at Greeley, right? And so we had a plan that's going to need to be adjusted now, where we have, right now we have our architect designing the front of Greeley. And we had talked about in the fall, having a presentation to the board and probably putting something up in front of the community for consideration in November. So I, I don't think we're going to be in a place where we're going to be able to do that. So what, when we think about, you know, what our budget looks like next year, there are certain items around safety and security that center on Greeley that we, we, we need to flesh out before, you know, reducing them from the budget. So I just want that in the back of everybody's mind too, because we were certainly in a different place when we were talking about moving forward and possibly asking the community to consider a bond to do a single point of entry in the, at the, in, in January than we are right now. So I'm not saying that that might not be something we consider in the future, but I, I definitely think that we need to be thinking that the fall may be premature based on where we are right now in this economy. So I do want to put that on the, on the table too, for people to be thinking about. So I, Jane, I, I think at this point, we'd like to hear everybody's thoughts.
Christine, can I mention one thing regarding the tax levy calculator? I, I think the important thing that we have to keep in mind is that whatever we decide on the tax levy really has a long-term impact for the future. Because one year's levy is based on the, the, previous year levy. And it's very likely that for 21, 21, 22 budget, the CPI number can be very low. And so that could be an issue. And also another thing is that we already know, because we have all been informed, that the TRS is going to increase their percentage of the, the premium to, to the school districts. So that's going to have a pretty heavy impact on, on the school district budget. So, so I think the important thing to keep in mind is that whatever we set this year will have an impact in the future.
So what would be helpful for us if we could hear your thinking about, about how you would like us to be thinking about moving forward with the budget based on our presentation today?
I'd like to let everybody go through. I'm trying to pick from, obviously my window here. So I'm happy to let everyone go through and ask their questions and I can jump in on the end. I see Hillary up here on the top. So if you want to start us off, Hillary, and?
Sure. I have a question before I give thoughts. Um, Christine and my mute, I'm not muted, right? I'm good.
You're good.
My question is, in the first reduction budget, you talked about eliminating the floater, the, the, just...
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, let's say, you know, over the summer, everybody who's gone through quarantine in the city says, "I'm getting out of here and I'm moving to Chappala." And suddenly we get tons of new families over the summer and we've eliminated that position in our budget. What happens?
Right. So we've had this happen before. We, we do a budget transfer and we cover, we cover the position by moving money out of another section of the budget. Usually it's contractual. So we would be able to absorb the cost, but for us, it's a better budgeting practice to have the contingency position in, in the original budget proposal.
I mean, I guess my instinct is that I'd like to see if we can do this with just the first tier reductions. I, I think that, um... I think that I think that if some of the things on there can wait, my only, I guess, real concern is with the roofs. And that if we're looking at this potentially being two years of needing to lower budgets, are the roofs going to be okay for that long? But I feel like that's, that's taking a real look at our budget. It is acknowledging that we probably should reduce to some extent this year, but also setting ourselves up to not be crippled for the next year. And doesn't, from my understanding of your guys' presentations, shouldn't actually impact the instruction that our kids are receiving.
That's correct. I would say, too, in that first tier reduction, if we have the savings that we anticipate out of this year's budget, the cameras that we have under the operation and maintenance line are for the high school and the middle schools because we had a plan to install cameras in all three buildings over the summer. We will do the high school cameras out of this year's budget. Because, you know, we have to continue to think about, you know, in honor of the work of the Greeley Safety Task Force. We're continuing to address our issues here. So I just want to mention that as a possibility, but we have to see where we are, you know, in June.
Do you have any other questions, Hillary?
I guess my only other question is, can things, I mean, can we say, oh, well, you know, maybe we go with first tier, but if we need extra money, take field trips out of the second tier? Or can we play with it a little bit that way? But I guess my sort of gut reaction is I'd like to see us try to go with the first tier reductions as the plan.
Okay, okay.
Warren, do you want to jump in?
Not yet.
Okay. Vicky?
Okay. So I recognize the difficulty in going really low on the levy because next year, the CPI will be close to zero and our budget will be in a hole if we do that. But still, I just want to take a look at, maybe going a little bit beyond what you showed us. So, you know, I apologize if there's some overlap in my list and what you have here. But I'd like to ask about our transportation contract. It's 6.9 million. And so I just want to clarify that that's contractual. So the buses aren't running right now, but we are obligated under the contract. Is that right? So I'm trying to guess, to figure out if we've had any savings from that.
Well, I can answer that. I think, Vicky, the issue here is that we shouldn't talk about this year and next year. First of all, with the contract with the transportation, we are still getting, try to get guidelines from the state, one, and also get advice from the council regarding this year's contract. But let's assume that we open school, who are not April 15th, or this year sometime, or we come back in September. If we're going to operate the entire year, next year, 2021, then we have to have that budget in full, you know, the entire contract. The reason is because we're going to run all the all the bus lines. But coming back to your first question is that we may have some savings this year, but we.
That's my real, that's my question. So that's not part of the savings that you showed here. So I'd like to know if you can have an estimate on that number.
Because we don't know.
But there will be some savings, though.
We don't know whether or not we have full obligation at this point.
Okay, so, okay, so that's.
We have, we have posed the question to the commissioner, and we haven't heard back.
Okay. So that's an open question, so we may have more savings there, but we don't know.
Yes, but there will be, there will be savings foot front this year, but.
That's what I'm talking about.
Okay, all right.
We may know by April 15th. Because our council has asked the question, but this is an area that all districts need more guidance on.
Got it, good, okay. I know that we have, we put in an additional position for the, for PE, the Assistant AD. Is that something that you decided not to look at?
Vicky, are you asking me? That position's important to our community and to our program, so that's not on any of the tiers for reduction.
So that's not there, okay.
That was already added into this year's budget.
I understand that. Also, let's see, just bear with me. I'm looking at the tech information. Now, I know technology is really important, especially at a time like this. I'm just wondering if we could make any reductions in the desktops. I mean, I know that's a small amount. But is that a place that would give us some? So for instance, instead of reducing field trips, I mean, do we need these new desktops when we're really going for laptops?
So.
I'm really going kind of line by line.
I mean, it's hard for me, I don't have Josh here in.
So I don't, yeah, I don't necessarily need an answer. I'm just looking at the items that, you know, when push, if push comes to shove, I mean, we don't know how long, you know, our country's going to be shut down. We don't know what's going to happen to the economy at the end of the day. We, you know, things are changing so quickly from one week to the other. So we could be looking at June, and situation's totally different in the economy. So.
Can I offer maybe a way to look at this that kind of, so maybe we can try to accomplish what you'd like us to? In terms of the desktop, there's a replacement plan that is congruent with what people need based on their workspace and the direction that we're going in as a district. So if there are desktops in the technology plan, it's because Josh has determined that there are certain employees that need that type of computer to function in your space. So what I could do is if you say to me, Christine, we need you to cut X amount of money more from tier one, or you need us to cut, then I can work with my team to figure out what makes sense based on what we know about the nuances of where that money goes and how it supports the program. So at that point, if you said to me, Christine, you'd like us to cut $50,000 from technology, I'd say, okay, I'd meet with Josh and Adam, and then I'd come back to you and I'd show you where we would cut that $50,000 from based on that collective conversation.
Yeah, but I would never make an arbitrary statement like that. So I guess what I'm asking is, you know, we, I guess we should try to find where there's a difference between something we really need and something that people really want. So with what you were describing here with the desktops, I can't really tell whether that's an absolute need or if it's something that people think would be really great. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I totally appreciate that. I feel like we present a budget to you because we don't go all the way up to the levy limit. So when we present to you, I feel like we're presenting to you what we feel like we need as a district in order to maintain the level of academic excellence in our program. But that doesn't mean in times of trouble, which is where we are right now, we can't make choices to reduce certain line items because we're not in a situation where budgetarily, we can support that work.
Got it, okay. Also, going to athletics, there was a big jump in the travel conferences from 3,200 to 23,000. And I think Jason explained that, that there are more, that our athletes are competing at higher levels. But that, you know, that's quite a jump. So I would ask you to really take a look at that. And I'd like a more sort of granular explanation because, you know, from 3,200 to 23,000 is a huge jump. And I'd like to understand that better.
So we can certainly do that for you, not a problem. What's happened, though, is when kids have to travel and when they win, there's like a bus cost and there's a hotel cost. And I believe in the past, we've been transferring money to cover those costs as they've happened. So he's anticipating or trying to budget for it in a more responsible way. But at our next budget presentation, I'll have a follow-up, I'll have follow-up for you on that.
Okay. And also, going back to athletics, with the coaches, have we had savings on that so far? Or do we anticipate savings based on the possibility of closing for the rest of the year?
Right, we have the spring program on the savings.
So, okay.
Hold on, Adam, can you just go to the saving slide? Let's keep going. We're going the wrong way. There we go. Here we go. Vicky, so right now, we're anticipating.
Okay. Okay. All right. Yeah, I mean, you know, to me, it's really a line by line and taking a look at what's important and what isn't. Although I appreciate the need to not go down to zero because we'll be in a terrible hole next year. But I just want to think about this a little more and, you know, continue the discussion on the 15th. So that's all I have for now, thank you.
Holly, did you want to jump in at all here?
Yeah, I did, actually. Do we expect to have measurable savings with being closed and not needing the SRO in the building?
So we pay for that by days worked. So right now, the SRO is not working for us.
Okay.
You approved us.
Right, but there's some amount of savings and that's not reflected here?
Wait, 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 wait. Can we, Adam, can you go up to the fifth slide?
Real quick, okay.
The next one, sorry. If you look at the high school, we actually put the student resource offices actually in next year's budget, even though we hired a person, but it was not in the budget. So actually, there's no savings there.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Does that make sense, okay?
All right. So generally, my thoughts are that this exercise of looking to find some places where we can reduce the budget, if possible, for next year is crucial, given the big question marks and the direction the economy seems to be heading in. And I do have a feeling that next year is going to be an even tougher position for us when it comes to how low the CPI may be. So I think my, my general thoughts are that I'd like to see minimal or no impacts to instruction. So I think that that's mostly tier one and tier two that you've called out. But I also don't want to make some safety trade-offs if we don't have to. So I'd like to see ways to make sure that those cameras can still be in, that we're not looking at cutting back security guards or anything that might jeopardize the safety of the students. So, and I guess I'd say those are my kind of primary priorities when it comes to cutting back. I think somewhere between like first tier and second tier, there's not, I mean, there's not a lot in second tier that makes a big difference. But I think that's where my comfort level is right now, where we have some reductions, but we're not sacrificing instruction or safety. Okay.
Warren, did you want to speak, or did you want me to go ahead? I just wanted to check in with you.
I can go where you can go, Jane, if you feel like going, go ahead.
Go ahead, that's fine, I can.
All right, so John, I have a little more detailed questions. I was just going through the presentation, give me one second here. I can't do the numbers this fast in my head, I was trying to find the numbers. So, John?
Yes.
The big question we have is that we don't know what state aid is going to be. That's seven, seven and a half percent of our budget. So I asked, you know, you and Christine to run up numbers on tier one, tier two, and the 0% budget. So thank you for doing that. I also asked if you could put a budget together that limited entire state aid. I don't think we'll limit all our state aid. But I guess I'd like to know what the, what, it looks, it would look pretty ugly, I think. But I think we, something we should take a look at, if we can take a look at that. I think that would, that would cut into a lot, though. It would cut into instructional, some safety, it would cut into almost like an austerity budget, right? But if we take out $1.8 million, that gives a state aid of 8.1, because you mentioned the 1.8 earlier. That said, what's the, I don't have the numbers from last week either. I couldn't find them quickly. What is the effect of fund balance that we had in the budget for prior and now? What kind of fund balance are we using?
Give me one second.
Yeah, I'll see if you can find it faster than I can find it.
Warren, while John's looking for that, I just want to be clear. Do you want us to run a budget with no, simulate what our budget would look like if we had to cut out the state aid?
Yes.
So do you want us to cut $9 million out of the budget and show you what those reductions would look like for next time?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I don't understand. I don't, by having, I mean, I think the governor's doing the best he can right now, what he has to work with. But by not giving us a set number, how do we budget when he could come at the end and say, eh, you know what, 9.9, you get a million out of that? I think we have to be prepared. We're not the federal government, we don't print money, we can't run, we can't run deficit.
You mean, cut? Right now, if you're talking about appropriation of fund balance for the following year, we're using 3.5 million.
And is that all, what category?
It's not all from fund balance, because we have.
Is it unrestricted?
They are all from unrestricted, but we also have one line in there. When I say appropriate 3.5 is that we have one line for 1.6 million coming out of sales of property. And if that doesn't materialize next year, during the whole year next year, then we have to use $3.5 million of fund balance.
And 4 million.
This is coming out of unappropriated fund balance, unassigned.
We have 4 million in assigned or 4.4?
3.5.
No, no, what's our total in that fund balance? I think it's 4.4, right?
We have more than 4.4 because it's 4% of 100. Give me a minute.
It's about $5 million.
Close to that.
Okay, are we using three and a half? So that gives us a million and a half left. Because we have somewhere around 20, 20-plus million dollars, low twenties of fund balance, correct? Most of it's restricted.
Okay, unassigned, we have 5.1 million.
Okay, not bad.
But we were also projecting an increase of fund balance at the end of this year of 1.4. Okay? So if we anticipate another potential savings of 730, so we could have $2 million of fund balance.
So that would be 7.1, and we can only hold 5.1, so we'd have to take at least 2 million out.
Unless we allocate that into something else.
Right.
Okay, but this is not a time to do that.
No, absolutely not.
Let me just mention. Let, let me just mention one, one, one thing. Uh. I understand what you are asking us to do to remove the entire, um, state aid. But, you know, that has never happened before. We have to get some state aid.
Why?
Well, because we, because there are two parts to it. One is foundation aid.
Okay.
That's per, per pupil, you know, based on the wealth factor and based on how many pupils you have. So they, so we get state aid. But that also, the other part, that's about four million dollars. And we also have close to six million dollars, so five plus. Um, some million dollars of, we call it the usage aid. So because we provide transportation. We have, um. Construction and also we provide special education services. So these are the three major that we get. At the.
We don't, we don't know what.
And BOSI's aid.
We don't know what the governor wants to cut. Or how much he wants to cut. He's, he didn't tell us that.
That's very, but, but I would say the way that the state compels us to comply with their regulations is through aid. So just, so there's got to be. I'm not saying there's not going to be aid reductions mid-year, which would. Throw us into it, which could be a quandary for us. But, um, the way that they get us to comply with what they want us to do is through aid. So I'm sure there'll be some way that they will be providing aid to every district. It just may be a different calculation or a different process.
I just think we have to be prepared, Christine, because.
I think you're right. Is there any?
So, so from the fund balance, John. You anticipate using the same amount of fund balance. Where? Regarding fund balance and the restricted funds. Can we tap into those if we needed to?
Well, the, the thing really is not to tap into it, but. If the potential revenue loss next year really materialized, even if it's not at 100% of what we projected at 2.6 million.
Yep.
We will have a hole. Let, let's say, let's say it's 50% of that. It would be short 1.3 million.
Okay, where do we get the one point?
We are saying that potential revenue loss is 2.6. But. That, that probably is pretty aggressive. But let, let's say it's 50% of that, then we'd be short 1.3 million. That, that's. We have to take from our unassigned fund balance.
Can we go into any of the, any of the? Assigned fund balances?
We, we can.
Where we, where, which ones could we go after? Because we have a lot of money that's, we probably have. 16, 17 million dollars in, in assigned fund balance, not unassigned.
Yes, the, the, the problem is that, you know, the assigned fund balance, they all have. Potential debt behind it. For example, we have tax territory reserve.
Yep.
We have over 10 million dollars of claims sitting out there.
Yep.
And, uh, so, you know, we take the money out and eventually you had to take, when you had to pay, you had to take, pay it from somewhere.
Understand.
And then also we have compensated absence. Um, that's all backed by. You know, the potential payout to, uh. Employees.
We, we, we created a new fund balance, I think. Early this year or last year.
Yes, we created a fund balance.
Capital.
Um, capital reserve.
Right.
The capital reserve can only be used for capital, uh, projects. And also that requires voters' approval.
If we had to replace the roof on West Orchard, would that be considered a capital project that could be used, done by voter approval?
Absolutely, then, but then we had to put the proposition up.
Understand, okay? I'm just trying to get. My, my hands around where the money, I, I'm assuming we're going to get. Not what we think we're going to get from the state. And maybe Christine, I'm, I'm maybe a little, being a little dramatic, asking you to go down 9.9 million. Um, but I think we should look at something. That's going to take maybe a better look at what we think we might get from the state. Is it, I don't think we're going to get 9.9. I don't think we can get. 75, maybe we'll get 75% of that. If we get that. Because, I mean, we're in it, we're actually in a very enviable position, you know, between us and some of the other districts around, like Barcliff, Byram Hills, Bedford. Close districts to us. We don't get a lot of state aid. We have what, 9.9% total. Some districts have 40, 50, 60% state aid. When they start divvying up, I, I would think if they start looking at. Where are they going to cut? You can't cut districts that. We're talking, I mean, Holly mentioned that we don't want to give up instructional and I, I agree with that. But. I would think the state's going to look at instructional also. They're not going to cut a district that gets 50, 60% state aid. We up in the Adirondacks or in the, in the southern tier. Who uses their state aid primarily for instructional? It, it just concerns me that we, we've got. We're, we're, we're setting a budget with. With moving targets and we don't get any kind of. Relief from moving targets. We know that.
Yeah, I agree with you, Warren. I mean, I, it's, it's, it's very difficult to budget. When you, when, and I, I'm not judging, I'm just stating a fact. When, when the governor is saying he could cut your budget mid-year. I mean, it, it's really hard to anticipate how to. Um, support instruction when you don't even know what that could possibly look like.
I mean, I support the budget every year. Uh, you guys do a great job. John, John starts, I mean, Jane, I would, I would, I would. Change something. You said they start the budget in October. I think John starts the budget about two minutes after the budget vote's done for. Next year, he's already thinking about next year's budget.
I meant the official start, yes.
However. However. As you stated, John, we never go to. The top. We don't, we don't budget. Saying we can get three, three percent and we work our way down. We, we budget what we need for.
Right.
Time, I think we have to take a really look at, take a hard look at what we need.
Can I, yeah, let me know. I, I just want to jump in and say something here.
So I, I think I'm done, but, um, so.
I think, I think.
Maybe not 9.9 million dollars we're not going to get from the state. I would hope we would get something, but I really think we have to take a look, a harder look at these numbers. Just so we can understand what we're looking at in the next three or four weeks.
I, I think, I just, I just want to add one thing is that I think. I think Vicky is probably. The only, uh, board member went through the. All the cuts that we went through.
When we did 0% increase, right?
I was on the PTA then. That's why you remember me, but I wasn't on the board. That was in 2000.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I, I'm the only one then. I think.
I do remember though. I was there in the audience at every meeting, so.
I, I, I think, I'm not, I'm not going to talk about the, the human impact on that, but I think I, I want to talk about the education impact even. Even though I'm not really an educator, I'm a business person in an education setting. But I can see it really, I think. Even 10 years later, there are areas that are still. Not back to where we were. And that really concerns me when, when it goes into the education side. For example, if you go to the second tier, you know, I was totally convinced when Christine proposed the budget adding an, uh, another AP to the, to the high school. And I understand there's a need and, and if we don't push that forward. Um. You know, how do we get to the next level? How do we improve? But I also understand the, the issue on, on, on the, on the pressure on, on the economic side. I do get it.
But John, that doesn't mean that we will never do that. I, I think this, this is. Not long term. I mean, hopefully this virus thing will end. I, I don't know. I don't want to make any.
But Vicky, but, but Vicky, Vicky.
I want to, I want to sit down and talk about this. I don't want to do this over Zoom every day, you know?
So, so Vicky, let's talk, talk this through. Okay, so, so you cut a pushing. And you said, well, let's add it back in, uh, 21, 22. If we have a very low CPI and we have a very high, uh, TRS responsibility that we had to pay. And. You think we'll be, and then also, you know, with the salaries that, uh, we, we have to pay. You know, there are, there are times that you just cannot add back into it. I, I, you know, we cut close over 100 positions and, uh, we, we add back very, very few.
I know, John, but we've never been in a situation where the governor can cut state aid throughout the year. So that's.
The governor, the governor did it once before, not, not this governor.
All year though, every quarter? I think that's.
Not, not every quarter.
That's the problem.
It was a one, one time thing.
You know what's happened?
I mean, I'm, I'm concerned with the fact, John. You know, every year, it used to be Allison, now it seems like it's me. When, when we find out what we're getting from the accounts receivable from the state, they close their books after six years and they don't give us what, what, oh, we lose. I don't know how many percentage, but we lose quite a few percent.
Right.
So what is it, what are they going to do this time? I mean. And I understand how they do this. So it's, I think we just have to be. Careful of what we're, what we're doing and how we're going to ask for this because. Without, without a fixed number, without, and I know, I know there's never a fixed number. They can always cut state aid. But when this governor comes out and says, we're, we're probably going to cut state aid. We've got a high probability of cutting state aid. That doesn't give me much hope to say he's not going to do it.
I, I just want to, um, I, I appreciate everyone's, um, position and I, Jane.
Yeah, I want to jump in for the couple of things we've got to finish up.
And then I, and then I, I have an idea of what to do next after I hear Jane, unless Jane says something completely. That makes me go in a different direction of, because what we do have is we have more time, right? So we're not going to come out of here with a decision. Today, but what we, what we, what we need, what we need on our end is just to hear your thinking. So at our next meeting, we have something more tangible. To present to you. So Jane, what, what, what's your?
So here's, here's, here's a couple of thoughts that I had. Number one, um. It is very difficult and I think everybody makes valid points that we don't know. At this point, how significant these reductions are. We don't know if we need to go back line by line. Um, but a couple of things I want to comment on. Number one. I am looking at what you presented for us, assuming that obviously, because I have faith in the administration, that this is, that you went over the budget line by line. And this is. The proposals you gave us in terms of the best places to make the cuts. Um. I, and I, while I, while I completely understand and, and, you know, Vicky's pointing about going line by line through it and Warren's point about. Um, making, you know, proposing, you know, giving us something with zero state aid. The flip side of my concern is taxing you all to come up with every possible scenario. When everyone is overtaxed and overworked right now. So I want everyone's questions answered. But I want to do this in a way that our faculty, administrators, et cetera. Are prepared but are not overtaxed to come up with every possible permutation when new information is going to keep coming in. So I have faith in you. That. As we get information, even in the next day, in the next weeks, that you will make alterations because we have bought some time. And Warren, I very much understand what you're saying. I have a tough time imagining. That we have to come up with a budget with zero state aid. If they give zero state aid to all the schools, everybody would shut down and it would be like Armageddon around here. I'm not saying that that can't happen.
I'm not saying, I'm saying us, Jane. I'm not saying everyone.
I know. I'm just saying that I'm trying to balance that with them coming up with, you know, spending hours working on a budget with that. I'm wondering if they can come up with other scenarios that aren't so extreme, that might be more usable and a better use of their time. So that, that's all I'm saying. Um, in terms of. The actual things that were proposed tonight, because I did want to focus on that. And I know we were going to have more discussions and I know people will have more questions. You know, when I look at, um. The tier one and, you know. Like to me, all of that stuff that's there, like that's a no brainer. I feel like we should do that. It's, it, you've worked on it. It's possible. I look what's there, although like I said, I do have a, like Holly said, rather. I do have concerns about the security issues and the cameras. But I'm wondering if there can be a little bit of a combo that we take first tier. And we pull some from second tier that's not instructional. Like the, the compensated absences that apparently we overbudgeted for transportation, supplies, et cetera. So we build a little bit of a cushion there. That doesn't hit the instruction the same way. I know that this, um, additional assistant principal has been talked about it really for a long time. I am of the mindset at, you know, with John, that if we don't do it now and we lower our budget, it's not going to come back for years. And I think that those administrators are extremely taxed at that level. So again, I think instruction would be impacted there. Um. I also, um, you know, so that's my thought in general. If, you know, my feeling looking at this tonight is you gave us the biggest areas where you think we can pull the stuff first. I think there might be a way to combo tier one and tier two. Um, I know it may come to a situation where we have to talk about, you know, zero, uh, change, but I do think. From discussions tonight, from, from our, you know, town call with the other board presidents. Everyone, I think across the district and the county is very hesitant to do this. Um, because if we start with such a low base in the future for our levy, we are really going to put ourselves in a hole. So I, I'm trying to balance that with the need for being prepared for the lack of state aid. And so I guess the question is. Christine, how, like, something I need to understand is if they're making reductions. Across the board, are they selectively reduction? Like what's the formula they have to use? Like. In terms of like, can they give all their state aid to this district and nothing to us? I mean. If, if they're giving state aid, they have to give us something.
Well, they have to, they have to provide state aid because it's the only way that they can compel us to comply with the regulations. Right? So that's, that's the, whenever. State, the government's like, you have to do this or you're going to lose this.
Right.
So their state aid will be in our, in our, in our revenue stream. It's just. How much and is that going to adjust across the course of the school year? And that's the, that's the big issue with.
Right.
Budget. So I, I think what we could do is, listen, I, I'm hearing what everyone's saying. I, I hear that.
Can I add one thought before you do your, your wrap up? Because, um. You know, I talked about going line by line, but I, I also, I, I agree with everyone that doing first tier and doing a combo of first year and second tier. All that is a no brainer. Yes, absolutely. But what's, what could happen with this, you know. Quarterly reduction is so unusual that I feel we need to be a little more sophisticated than just saying, okay, we're going to have a first tier, maybe combo with the second tier. So I think that if we do go line by line and try to extract those, those items that we can. Expense later in the year. So for instance, if we go through the second quarter and we see what our state aid there is after half the year, then we could say, okay. Now we can get all the, the desktops. I know I'm being very simplistic here. But are there items in the budget that can be staggered? Uh, every quarter so that we could sort of move along with this moving target? I just think we need a slightly more sophisticated structure. To, to deal with this kind of, this new scenario.
Can, can I add one thing? Um, Adam, is it possible you can go to the future slides, go to the next one? And the next one? Yes. Can I just talk about one thing is because I think Vicky, you have a very good point and I still remember last year, you made a passionate. Speech about, you know, the, the tax levy when it's too low, it will hurt the future and we are facing that.
Yeah, I totally get it. I, I'm.
So the problem here is that. You see, we, we are talking about reducing the budget. But that is not addressing the shortfall on the revenue. The reason is because if you look at the tier one. What this, Christine put together here is that the budget increases 1.86. But we didn't keep the tax levy at 2.74. So here we are reducing both the budget and the tax levy. So if there's a, if, if there's a tax, not tax levy, if there's a revenue shortfall, we'll be in a hole. We will be using our unassigned. Uh, fund balance that, um, Warren was talking about that five, five million dollars. And I support that because you know what? This is a time that. We are facing the, the economic issue, you know, the entire, entire country is facing that and, you know, we have to think about our community.
That's a rainy day fund, John. And it's raining.
Some of them aren't, but not all of it. Some of them aren't, but not all of it.
But that unassigned fund is a rainy day fund, and right now it's raining.
That's true.
Yes. Yes, that's why, you see, the ideal situation, you know, if everything is okay, and we're not facing the downturn, possible downturn, it will be the budget reduced by 1.86 and you keep the tax levy at 2.74. But that's not what we are saying here. We're not addressing the tax levy part.
My concern is that without state aid, without understanding what state aid's gonna look like, that we run out of unassigned fund balance. And I know we can do other things, I'm just trying to take a look ahead. I had something else, but go ahead, I'm sure somebody else will say it.
Well, I just wanna address what John said. Yes, I totally understand that we're addressing the revenue part, not the tax levy, we're addressing the state aid. But I think that my point still stands that we have an expense, you know, expenditure budget that can be somewhat staggered so that when the state aid does not come in as expected on a quarterly basis, that we can make adjustments on the expense side, understanding that the tax levy can, will remain as we set it. We're just talking about the state aid portion of the revenue budget.
Understood. So there are some expenses that we can stagger out through the course of the school year.
I think if you can look at that, and I guess I hadn't really formulated my thoughts or articulated my thoughts well enough when I was talking about going line by line. You know, it's with one eye towards doing that. And if we don't have to do that, that could also perhaps avoid using the one FTE contingency position or going into instruction at all. So-
To ask sort of what's probably a very obvious question. We have a little more time, which Christine has mentioned, in terms of being able to get this formulated. And we do have various groups that sort of advocate with state aid. And I get that all of this is very up in the air, and we're not gonna get any hard answers in terms of, you know, this is how much you'd be reduced by or what have you. But I wonder if, given that literally every school district in the state, other than the big five, is in the same boat right now. Like if there's any way to get some guidance in the coming weeks on, will there be a minimum? Like, do we know what the minimum is and the maximum is, and we have to work between that? Do we know, like, I just wonder, I feel like we're flying so blind right now. Right, that we're generating all of this and it could be completely changed in a couple of weeks. Right.
I think that that's reasonable. So maybe what, so I feel like I have a pretty good idea on what to come to the April 15th meeting with, based on this discussion, right? And again, we're not making any decisions that date. John and I are just gonna take your thinking and try to present something for us to continue to work off of. So, I mean, I'm hearing we're in the middle of tier one and tier two. I'm hearing you need some simulations of what if state aid gets caught, cut drastically? How would we be able to support the budget? I'm hearing a tiered approach to spending on our, on the parts of our budget where we're able to do that. So I'm hearing all of that. So let us go offline, let's hear public comment today, right?
Yeah.
Go offline, and we'll work on something over the course of the next week for us to talk about on the 15th. We may have more time. I mean, not that we want the budget development process to go on forever, but right now he's saying, "Hey, you can have your, it's gonna be after June 1." He may have to push that till later, and we may have- adoption.
But this discussion's for Christine to give you feedback, so you guys can go back and come back to us. I mean, we don't have the answers right now. You guys have a lot of great answers though, so, but we just need a little more information, I think.
Yeah, I agree, and hopefully as time, it's, everything continues to evolve, right? Remote instruction evolves. What you have to do around your calendar evolves. The budget's evolving. Everything's evolving because this is so new. And so we just need to kind of honor and respect that process and do the best that we can in the moment with the information that we have. And luckily, we've bought some more time. So it's good to hear your thinking.
Let me just add one thing. The requirement for budget adoption is no later than 24 days prior to the budget vote date. So budget vote is June 1st. Then we have a probably till about May 5th or May 6th to adopt budget.
Okay. And it has to be after June 1st, so we don't even know when it is at this point.
Yeah, June 1st is a Monday, that's a very odd day to vote, so usually it's a Tuesday.
We assume it's later.
So listen, we thank everyone for your feedback, and we'll go back and we'll work on it some more.
Okay. So are you done with the superintendent's report then, Christine?
Yeah, I'm done, definitely, thank you.
Okay. So we're moving on to item five, public comment. Let me just say a few words about that and how this is gonna run. I see we have a lot of attendees tonight, and so I wanna make sure everyone's familiar with our public comment procedure and also how it's running now remotely via Zoom. We always welcome public comments so that we are respectful of each other's time. We limit public comments to three minutes. This is a comment period, it's not a question and answer period. Board members can be contacted via phone or email. And after the public comment period has been completed, the board may or may not have a discussion amongst themselves regarding any comments presented. Note that while in-person public comment obviously isn't possible at this time, we are encouraging everyone to contact the Board of Ed with any comments, questions, et cetera, which you can do subsequent to this meeting. How we have worked out this meeting is that if you are an attendee on Zoom now, you can press the button to raise your hand, and you can be promoted over to a panelist for your three-minute comment. The one requirement, however, is that your Zoom is working and you have video capability so that we can see you, and you can state your name and we can identify you. That is a requirement that we have. We do not take phone-ins. If you can't get your video working, I apologize. I know this isn't easy for everyone, but you must have video capability for us to allow the public comment here. If for some reason it doesn't work, we will let you know, and you can submit your comments to us after this meeting this evening. So Adam is gonna help with this. I am looking at the attendees now, and I see two people with their hands up. The first one, Adam, if you're seeing that too on my list, is Jay Bookin. If we can promote that person over to a panelist and see if we can get video on them. Okay, we see you. Is your video, is your audio on?
Yes, I believe it is.
But now your video just went out for me.
Got it right now, coming back, here we are.
Okay, terrific. So our clerk will time you at three minutes, bear with us. If you could state your name when you start out, that would be great, so go ahead, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. My name is Joshua Bookin, my wife Lauren sitting next to me. And here we are. So first off, we wanna say that as taxpayers in this town, we are so pleased with the work that you have all been doing. Everything that everyone has done on every level in the district has really been fantastic. And we know how hard that this experience is. We're both teachers. I teach in the city, my wife teaches in Dobbs Ferry. And so we know what you guys are going through, and we're really impressed with the job that you've been doing. So thank you all, to everyone on this screen, and to everyone who's been working in the district. We really are super appreciative for everything that's been done. The reason that we were attending tonight is because we really wanted to just address the idea that was floated, that the incoming Grafflin first grade class for next year will be only three classes, rather than the four kindergarten classes that exist today. Our daughter is in kindergarten, and we really would like to be on record to support the idea that smaller class sizes are obviously and well documented with data to be very beneficial to the learning of everyone in class. And so we wanted to be on record advocating for the idea that there would be for first grade classes next year. From the proceedings tonight, we understand how much stress the budget and the district is under in terms of the current circumstances, and so we understand how difficult that this all can be. But we wanted to be, you know, one voice that is documented as taxpayers in the town, that we really would hope that the class sizes would not be increased by reducing it down to three classes next year.
And parents who have been so, so happy with their first year in Grafflin, our first experience with the Chappaqua School District. Our daughter is in a class of 17 right now. She's had an amazing first year. It's been just incredible. And so we want to see her continue to grow and feel supported. And yeah, we don't wanna see that change as a result of budget cuts.
We moved here six years ago primarily for the school district as it was then and as it is now. And so we just want to continue to give our daughter the best and to give everyone here in Chappaqua the best education possible. And we feel that the smaller class sizes is certainly beneficial, and we hope that it will be taken into consideration that maintaining that class size at such a young age in the first grade level is something that's been on the radar of you guys. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a nice night, thank you. Okay, thank you so much. Next, with their hand up, I have Russell and Melanie Dritz, if they could be promoted to a panelist.
Hello, everybody.
Okay, great, we can see you, thank you so much. So if you could just state your name and names, and go ahead.
They're Russell and Melanie Dritz. We actually just wanna second that prior conversation. If you can actually tell from the number of people on this call, actually, if not everybody in the class, nearly everybody in the class is on board today. We have a big concern about the number of teachers in the grade. And a lot of that actually has to do with the current iLearning situation. You know, our kindergarten students are the most vulnerable here. You know, they've already had their iPads taken away from them and given to older students so that they can benefit. And the burden has been placed unfortunately on us to spend most of our time teaching. You know, while other students have enjoyed synchronous learning, you know, we've been teaching our kindergarteners. And without the basis of, you know, real teachers teaching them next year, given that they've already lost a quarter of kindergarten and are gonna be behind the ball when they go to first grade, we want them to be able to gain the skills that they need in order to be successful with future iLearning. You know, I'm hopeful that we're gonna be open in September, but I, unfortunately, I'm concerned about that as well. But in the case that we are, we wanna make sure that our youngest are protected here and make sure that they have the right student-to-teacher ratios. Based on the numbers that I've seen, we're already at 23 to 1, which is the absolute limit based on the union contract. And that only assumes two additional students coming on board. So it's likely that we're gonna need a new teacher there no matter what. However, you know, in the case that, no matter what, we need an extra teacher there so that our students aren't affected. You know, when we actually look at it year over year, the numbers are going up pretty dramatically. It's 14% above the other classes just at Grafflin alone. But compared to the year before, it's a 37% increase in the number of students per class. And that's really hard, especially for these students. You know, just on a personal note, you know, I've been, worked in education for 19 years. I've helped A-12 schools, post-secondary schools, iLearning companies and the likes. Many of you I've spoken with before, and I offer my help as however I can. On the budget, you know, I hear your pain in trying to figure this out. I would advise you to look at the CARES Act that just came out because there is money that will be coming to our district. It may not be a lot, but it will fill some of the gap from the state. And I believe that's part of the reason why the state is doing what they're doing. I also think that you need to consider that this is a time where we have to make hard decisions. And I think those hard decisions need to be maintaining the core of our faculty and asking our administration to help teach, and coming up with other creative solutions around the district, which leaves everything on the table, including renegotiating existing contracts.
Excuse me? This is time?
If I can be helpful.
Christine?
Let me know.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay. Next up is Anthony Napolitano.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we've got you, so go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. First, I start by thanking everyone for all their hard work in these obviously very trying, uncertain, difficult times, so appreciate that. I actually have two comments, I'll try to stay well under the three-minute limit here. So first, actually, I'd like to reiterate the comments of the last two attendees in terms of the class sizes for next year's first grade class in Grafflin. I also have a kindergartner, and absolutely, these are the most vulnerable students, especially right now. I also happen to have a fourth grader, and it's night and day in terms of the independence that my fourth grader has, the amount of support that my kindergartner needs from me, you know, and our concerns about them falling behind. Then obviously, as they move into first grade next year, you know, again, they're still very young and at a time where, you know, a great deal of development is happening, and having those smaller class sizes is obviously very important. The second comment that I had, and you know, I think I speak for a lot of parents within the community who have children with IEPs, is the concerns over the reduction of the half of FTE in terms of speech therapy. You know, obviously, I think goes without saying that speech is absolutely tantamount to literacy and getting up our, you know, ELA scores and ELA, you know, skills for our students. And especially given the circumstances right now, you know, I know my son right now is not getting, you know, the speech therapy or really any of the services in his IEP in the level that is normally in his IEP. I understand the situation, you know, I applaud his providers and teachers and everyone trying to work together through these difficult times. But, you know, I'm concerned that these students are already in a vulnerable place, falling behind as parents like me and my wife are trying to fill in and fill a gap and become, you know, speech therapists and OTs and PTs. And, you know, it's just very concerning that they're gonna be coming in next year with potentially less resources for these students. And again, obviously, this is gonna be very important for literacy. So again, thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. We have Jaclyn and Sean Moranis, uh, Moraines, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing it, but that's, next one up.
See me?
Yes, we can, we're good. So go ahead and state your names, I'm sure I've mispronounced your last name.
No, no, you did great. My name's Sean Moranis, and my wife is beside me, Jaclyn Moranis. We also have a kindergartner in Grafflin, she will be in first grade next year. We are asking that there is an additional teacher assigned to that first grade next year. The way I look at it, there are 69 kids in the grade now. Anecdotally speaking, I actually grew up in Chappaqua. I've talked to two people in the last week who, because of this economic crisis, are no longer bringing in any money, and they'll be moving to Chappaqua and living with their parents and sending to kids to school in the district. So I think it's reasonable to expect an influx of kids this next year because of sort of the United States in crisis. So there are 69 kids in the grade right now, 23 per class. If you were to add one more teacher, it would drop down to 17.25 kids per class. I think it was, it's a no-brainer, you know, these are kids who, right now, are gonna be missing out on probably a quarter of the school year. I think that the first grade is gonna be critical in terms of developing reading skills, you know, basic arithmetic. This is, you know, kind of like a watershed moment for our kids. And it's a pretty, you know, look, I'm very sympathetic to the school's budgets, especially next year. I think it's gonna be obviously a challenge. But I think that, you know, one more teacher in one first grade, which has the, you know, the most kids per student in the entire, you know, elementary school, out of all three elementary schools, I don't think it's too much to ask. You know, there was Mrs. Worth, my daughter's teacher, was out on maternity leave this year, and they had an absolutely fantastic permanent substitute for a few months, Mrs. Engler. I know she's still at the school as a substitute. You know, I think that, you know, there's somebody at the school, I'm sure, who could be hired in some way and assigned a full class in that first grade. I think it would really be an amazing thing for our kids, and I don't think it's too much to ask. You know, I think that, you know, it might be a slight challenge, but I think that we could definitely find the teacher, find the money, because I think it's that important. All right?
Okay, thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay, Jeff Mester, we can maybe, if you can raise your hand again, Jeff, so we can move you over.
All right, did that help?
Yes.
Yep, okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Now I can't hear, now I can't hear. Okay. First, as I've said in the past, I do, I wanna agree with the self-congratulatory discussion at the beginning. Okay. First, as I've said in the past, I do, I want to agree with the self-congratulatory discussion at the beginning. I think the district has done a terrific job, and I also, in terms of academically addressing this situation. I do know we're light years ahead of many other districts. And I do appreciate the willingness to help out those other districts in terms of helping them get up to speed. Secondly, and I do also want to thank everybody for having this meeting today and readdressing the budget. Couple of comments from taking notes during the meeting. Well, I get the mathematical concept of we have to raise the tax levy this year so that we can do it next year. Intellectually, the concept of we have to raise taxes this year so we can raise taxes next year. I'm not 100% sure that that makes intrinsic sense. I think that in terms of what Warren was talking about, in terms of looking at some of the worst-case scenarios, I think, you know, if we think it's a V rebound in terms of the economy, I think that would probably be the first time the people in this community actually agree with President Trump. So I would look strongly that this is not going to be a V rebound. So in terms of what was presented, obviously, I don't know the line by line. I don't think, I'm not even sure it's appropriate that I do the line by line. But if anybody wants my opinion, I'd be happy to give it. But I do believe that somewhere between 1.5, which is tier one and tier two, and $2 million makes sense as a middle ground between slash and burn and go about our business. I think that there are three types of budgets that I think you talked about, too. There's a want budget, there's a need budget, and then there's a budget that the community will pass that I think we have to look at quite frankly at this point. I don't think that they're all, three of them in agreement. Sometimes they are, but I don't think this year. As mentioned before, I was on the board, well, 12 years ago, or 10 years ago, when we did the zero budget and all the cuts, and it was drastic. And with drastic times, call for drastic things. Everyone said it couldn't be done again. Here we are facing the same sort of situation. So I think we should, as a community, look strongly at our ways to cut expenses as well as, you know, raise revenue at the means using more fund balance. I'm not 100% sure how it happens, but the fund balance in previous meetings going up $1.4 million projected at the end of this school year versus the end of the last school year. It appears at least 1.1 of it is coming from purchases on order and subsequent years expenditures. I'm not clear on what that means. So, but it seems to me that there's an extra $1.4 million that could be spent.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
How was that?
All right, well, we'll get back on over.
Okay. Thanks for your comments, Jeff.
I'd let Jeff go for one more minute. Up too late. Sorry.
Okay.
I can move if it's the board's decision.
I'd let, we could let him finish for one minute, but...
I'd like to stick to the three minutes for tonight. I think we have a lot of people waiting, but I'll see what everybody else says.
I think we had the idea that we had three minutes, but if the board decided we can let somebody speak a little longer, we would do that. But if you weren't, you're the president, you can decide how we run the meeting.
Can I offer a suggestion? So what we've done in the past is we've allowed people to finish up their comments and not come right, come up, back up to the microphone, right, for another three minutes? That's not the kind of...
No, we don't allow that.
But we have allowed, we have, you have by action, given people an additional minute to finish up their thoughts. So that would be in line with your current practices. So someone...
Yes, that's fine. I mean, if we do, I thought Jeff was wrapping up, and that's okay. And I see he has his hand up again, and we don't let them come. So if we take a pause then, if everyone wants to vote, we normally vote on allowing him to do that, to give him an additional minute to finish it, then we'll do that. And then we're going to go on to the next people.
So we didn't...
All in favor of allowing Jeff to finish his comments?
Well, I think you need a motion and a second, and then...
Yes. Can I... Have we moved in the past? I guess we have. So Warren, do you want to make a motion to allow Jeff to finish?
I move.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
What are we, can we have a discussion? What are we, if, I mean, this is not really about allowing the one person to come back. It's just, you know, what is our protocol now? How long are we allowing?
We never allowed more than one minute. We allowed people to have an additional minute maximum. That was our previous procedure when it was in-person meetings. We allowed one additional minute, and then absolutely that was done.
Just to finish the thoughts.
Okay.
Because of the techno...
I think this is, you know, at this point, this is tedious for a lot of people waiting.
Yeah.
I have no objection to letting someone finish their thought. I just think this way of doing it is very tedious.
So I just, I think because we're on technology, it's more complicated than it usually is, right? If we were at the microphone and someone was out there speaking, very naturally, you've never not allowed someone an additional minute since we've had this rule in place.
I mean, I, what makes sense to me, I know this outside of protocol, but because we have this technology, I just think we should just let the person finish their thought without moving and seconding. Just let them finish their thought, tell them the time is up, and give them another 30 seconds to finish their thought.
Agreed.
That makes sense, so that we don't have this back and forth with the board. Is this finish your sentence? You know, that seems to make sense and not go into extra minutes.
Okay, Vicki, I agree with that.
I mean, that's my personal view. You don't have to agree.
No, I think you get cut off at three minutes. You're halfway through a statement. You finish your statement, but you don't start.
I think it's fair for someone to finish their sentence or a couple of sentences.
I think we have to make adaptations, given that we're online. I think, given that it's challenging online, you know, I personally, yes, someone can finish their sentence. I don't think we should necessarily add an extra minute to their time. It's difficult enough as it is, and I think people appreciate that they're being heard because we want them to be heard. So where does that leave us now?
You're going to be...
I move, I change my motion to say that we allow people to finish the, you know, Lisa can tell them when three minutes is up, and they can finish, they can finish a statement. Quickly.
Yes, I can do that. I'm just saying we have a motion on the table to allow Jeff more time.
Finish his statement. I think Holly seconded. I think we had to vote.
Okay. All in favor of allowing Jeff to finish his statement?
Well, I think, I changed my, I changed my motion to allow, after three minutes, that we would let the person, as Vicki said, anyone could just finish their statements.
Yeah, but the motion was related to Jeff.
I thought I changed my motion.
Can I just, you're entering, just, you're entering into a little inconsistency here, right? So our common practice has been you allow a person an additional minute to finish their statement. Because what you don't want is for people to hop back online and come up for another three minutes. So I think our process has been very, very clear. So I think to make an adjustment right now and allow someone to finish their state, it's a lot of latitude in how you're approaching it. And we've really made a conscious effort to be very consistent.
Yes, we want to be consistent. We want to be consistent with what we've done all the time. So if someone, we have, if someone really could not finish, we would all agree and make a motion to allow them to finish up. So let's stick with that. And if that means Jeff jumps back on and finishes up his statement, and we will allow that moving forward. Does that sound correct?
Correct.
I think it's ambiguous, but I'll just go along.
But that is what we have done all along. Christine is correct.
And I feel like you need to put a timeframe on it so Lisa has some direction so that we can end that extension. Takes someone five minutes to finish up what they're saying.
We've never allowed, we've never allowed more than an additional minute, and that's what we have always voted on.
Yep.
So I think, I think you're, you might be best served continuing that practice, moving Jeff over here, giving him an additional minute. And if you're in a situation with any of the other participants, you enact the same strategy.
I'm fine with that. So Warren, would you like to move that that is how we proceed right now?
I move that's how we proceed.
Do I have a second?
I'm confused, but yes, we're doing what we usually do.
Yes. All in favor of continuing our procedure of letting someone finish their thought up until an absolute stop at four minutes? All, that's what we're doing.
Having to take a motion to do that every time?
No, no. We're doing that, I think...
I, as the...
Go ahead, Jane.
I think what we have previously done, we haven't moved to it every time. We have just reached over and said, will we give the person an extra minute? Is that correct?
No.
So we have moved every time? Okay, then we will motion every time.
I'm just saying that I think that that's tedious at this point. I think we should just let someone finish their thought for one or two sentences, then move on.
I'd rather just stay consistent because that, if that's what we've done, then I think we should stay consistent because the whole point of this with the visual and everything is that we are trying to keep it consistent with our usual procedure.
Okay. And not to be a contrary voice, but maybe the easiest, given this whole situation, is to just say we're stopping at three minutes. There are a lot of people waiting to speak. And maybe the easiest way to be consistent and stay with our practice is to cap everybody at three minutes.
I would agree with Hillary because this is too cumbersome to do it this way. But I will go with the majority on this.
Well, I'm gonna, I feel that for purposes, I feel like we have had to make amends to this. We want everyone to be participatory. And my feeling is, even though that is our normal procedure in a meeting, I feel that on a Zoom call, so we can continue and move through this rapidly, I'm in favor of what Hillary says to make an adjustment only on a Zoom call, that there is a hard stop at three minutes.
I would agree with that.
Okay, I will amend my motion to have on Zoom calls, on a regular meeting, we can make adjustments on the fly. On Zoom calls, it's a three-minute hard stop. Maybe Lisa can say you have 10 seconds left or something like that, 15 seconds left.
But we allow someone to finish their sentence, right?
Okay.
I don't want to be rude, but...
I think we can move on to the next person at this point, if everyone is in favor of that.
Do we need to vote?
Aye.
Yes, there's a motion, there's a motion. There's a motion. I think Warren needs to withdraw his motion.
I amended my motion.
So your motion is what? Just let's state it again so we're clear.
My motion, I'm amending my motion that says that we will go with Hillary's idea where it's three-minute hard stop on Zoom calls. If it's, if we have a meeting in person, we go back to our normal process. And...
Okay. Do we have a second for that motion? I'll second that. I'll second it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All right. Okay. We're going to our next caller. That's Losen Family. Can you, can you hear us? And we'd like to hear you.
I can hear you.
Okay, terrific. So if we could just...
I listen to all the hard work you've done.
Okay, just, you know what? If you could do us a favor, just state your names and then go ahead. Thank you so much.
Sure. Yeah. Hi, my name is Fred Losen, and my wife Erica, our son Andrew. He's a kindergartner at Grafflin. And in looking over the budget and the proposed class sizes for first graders next year, we're concerned with the idea of consolidating four classrooms into three, like so many other people have mentioned tonight. For us, first grade is a really formative year. We're learning drastically accelerates. Children develop the foundational building blocks for reading, writing, arithmetic. And with the proposed class size of 23 students, we're worried the children are going to get lost, slip behind, you know, fall through the cracks because of the increased demands placed on the teachers simply trying to manage more children. We moved to Chapacua five years ago, and the primary driver was based on the quality of the school district, the class size, and the education we knew our kids would get here. Unfortunately for our daughter, she's no longer in the district. She's at the Winward School. And our son, older son, is going to be going there next year. And I say this because we researched a lot about the specific needs for children in education and more generally about childhood learning. And we found overwhelming evidence of the importance of lower student to teacher ratios, especially in these earlier years. Class size matters a lot. And given the current climate of this distance learning, I think these kindergartners to be first graders next year, they're going to start off behind. It's going to be hard for them to catch up with the current class size and even harder with the proposed class size of 23. For Andrew, he's going to be a Chapacua student from kindergarten through 12th grade. And importantly, we want him to reach his full potential. We want his friends and his classmates to reach their full potential. These children should be given the environment that not only is nurturing, but also provides an opportunity to develop a lifelong love of learning. And that really happens in smaller class sizes. So we hope that you reconsider the proposal to cut from four classrooms to three. And that's our thoughts on it. So thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Have a nice night.
You too.
Next with their hand up is April Cohen. Thank you again, Adam, for doing this. Hi, April. We can, we can see you. You're a little blocked off of the, there we go.
Okay, better.
Okay. If you could just state your name and then go right ahead.
Hi, my name is April Cohen. I am the parent of a kindergartner, Brody, at Grafflin. And like many who already spoke, we moved to Chapacua because of the district's reputation for excellence in education. And I have to tell you, in our first year thus far, our expectations have been met or exceeded at every level. But that does bring me, like many other parents who came before me, to comment on the proposed class size for next year's first grade class at Grafflin. I am particularly mindful of the unique situation our district is in this year. And, but like others, I want to talk specifically about this particular class. Like all students, the kindergartners here have had a year essentially cut in half. But unique to kindergarten is their intense amount of social learning development that takes place at that level. And that gap in social learning cannot be addressed or even worked on by eye learning taking place. So essentially, you want that next year's first grade class come in as essentially a very, very socially young class with a significant amount of catching up ahead of them. And I believe that it will be extremely difficult to work on that and to catch them up on this gap with a jump in class size of essentially 33%. So I'm asking essentially that you maintain the four classes for next year's first grade and therefore maintain the excellence in education that Chapacua is known for at the youngest level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night.
You too.
Next up is Amandip Jongji. Again, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing, but that is the next person with a raised hand. Hi, Amandip, is that you? Can you turn on your audio? We can't hear you. Lower left of your screen, see if there's an audio that you can click on. We can't hear you. I'm so sorry.
He doesn't appear to be muted. He's going back and forth between mute and unmute, but I don't hear any sound.
Amandip, we're going to see if, we're going to have to move you back and try and get you. If you can see, we are not, you might not be having audio through your computer. You might be having audio through another source because none of us can hear you. No, I'm sorry. So let's, we'll put you back in the list and raise your hand again, and we'll see if we can get, if you can work on that at your end to try and work on your audio because we can't hear anything. So sorry about that. We'll bring you back again if you raise your hand and you can figure it out. Thank you. Next is Christine. Christine, can you hear us?
Yes, hi, I can hear you.
Okay, you can just state your name. We're good. State your name and go ahead. Thank you so much.
Yes, my name is Christine Carney. I have actually twin girls in kindergarten currently that will be moving up to fourth grade at Grafflin. So I'm kind of double, doubly into this. I also have a fourth grader, so I'm very familiar with Grafflin. I just wanted, I'm going to keep this brief. When we moved to Chapacua, it was about four years ago. We, I remember, we went to contract in April, settled on our house in July. I don't even remember notifying the school district that I was going to be entering at that time, my son, and then, you know, eventually my twin girls into the school district until the summer. So I don't know how you can anticipate that this class size is, you know, 23 kids. That's the maximum amount, that you're not going to have an influx of children coming in between now and, say, September. I mean, I know the spring buying season, that might be a little bit in flux with this coronavirus. But in my experience, we've only ever had more children move to Chapacua than to leave Chapacua. And then once we were in Chapacua, I've seen more kids, it was almost like a pipeline from the city, moving to the school district. So if you're already going from four classes down to three, you're really putting yourself in a difficult situation then once more kids come moving in. So I just want to hope you're mindful that between now and September, you're probably going to be getting more children... So I just want to hope you're mindful that between now and September, you're probably going to be getting more children moving to Chappaqua. So I would really hope to see that you maintain the four classrooms that we currently have, which has really been beneficial for both my girls. I have them split between two classes. One of my daughters is in Mrs. Worth's class. My other daughter is in Mrs. Pollitt's class. They've had an extremely positive year. I was just to hate, you know, with, they're just taking off now in reading for having more kids and that added pressure for, for anything negative, you know, with the reduction, with the increase in class sizes to happen. So I just, you know, hope that you're really thinking about the numbers coming in between now and September.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, have a nice night.
You too.
Next up, Adam, which I can see is Sarah Chin Tombi. Hi, Sarah. Can you turn, ah, we can see you now. Okay, so just state your name and go right ahead. Thank you so much.
My name is Sarah Chin Tombi and my husband and I have three boys in the district. And my youngest is Nolan. He is five years old and he's, was receiving special education services. When he was in preschool, he had a speech, language therapist, and a C E T. He stopped getting those services when he went to kindergarten. I was really nervous about that, but I think he is doing really well. And the reason for that is because he has a phenomenal teacher, Mrs. Pollitt, and a small class size. So it worries me greatly that he's going to go to first grade and he's not getting the practice he needs right now with transitions and the socialization skills that he's missing out on. So I'm obviously advocating for another teacher for the first graders.
Okay, that's okay, but thank you for participating.
Thank you so much.
We very much appreciate it. Next, I have Adriana R.
Hi, sorry.
Hi, Adriana, if you could just state your full name and then you can go right ahead. We have a video on you.
Adriana Rego, and I'm, I have a son who's in kindergarten. Like all these other parents who've been calling in, I'm also calling about the class size. Obviously, as everyone has said, it's better for kids to have a smaller teacher-student ratio. But my concern is also the, all the time that they're missing this year in school, that it will be hard, obviously, to catch up academically, but also it's going to be a challenge for a lot of these kids, I think, to transition back into school. And I think the more support that they can get, the more successful that they'll be. So again, I just wanted to add another voice to advocating for having the smaller class sizes for the fall. And just to say thank you for, you know, trying to do these meetings via Zoom because I'm sure it's challenging. It's probably a longer meeting than you guys are usually having. And so thanks for continuing to do these efforts and giving us a chance to voice our opinions as well.
Thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it. I don't, I see Amy Boyle is the next person I see there.
Hello, can you see me or hear me?
Yes.
Hi.
State your name and go right ahead. Thank you so much.
Sure. Hi, my name is Amy Boyle. I am also a parent of a kindergartner at Grafflin. His name is Reese. And I just also wanted to raise my hand to say that, you know, the whole, the entire class, as well as the other classes at Grafflin, we're all very concerned about our children losing another teacher potentially next year. Obviously, I just want to echo what everybody else said about this being such an important time of their lives. They're learning all of the fundamentals. So the fact that we're even considering it in this school district is actually quite shocking to me. So I just wanted to mention that. I get the financial piece of it. I'm the CFO of a private equity firm. I get it. But I feel like we're taking away from an area of the school that is fundamental to and will affect their entire, you know, their entire education throughout the program. So I just wanted to raise my hand and make sure that my voice was heard on that as well. Thank you.
Can you ask questions?
No.
You can ask questions?
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Okay, I know, I know Jeff has his hand up. Nope, not anymore. Okay, it's gone. I was just going to say, we apologize for the confusion there. Jeff, we, we welcome your comments if you want to continue sending them into us. Next person with their hand up is Michelle.
Hi, I'm Michelle Pletka. I have a daughter, Camilla, who is in kindergarten with Mrs. Larkin. And I just wanted to reiterate what everyone else is saying. We're at Grafflin as well. And my major concern is, discussed throughout the night, the impact of coronavirus on next year's budget. But I also think we should consider the impact of coronavirus on the influx of students within suburbs. And so I think that the two-person increase in our class size doesn't seem realistic when people might actually be concerned about living in New York City and wanting to leave to come to the suburbs. So again, I think that it's unrealistic to move from four classes to three. And I hope that you reconsider it because I think that it will detrimentally impact all of our children. And that's basically it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Eugene. Eugene Koizman. Eugene? We can't hear you, Eugene. Eugene? We still cannot hear you. I'm so sorry. Nope, no audio. I'm sorry. If you can try and fix it, we don't have an audio on you. Okay, sorry about that. If we can't get to you tonight, just submit something to us, okay? Thank you very much. Sorry about that. I think we can move on to Joseph Boshkowsky.
Hello.
Hi, go right, state your, state your name and go right ahead. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe Boshkowsky. I'm here with my wife Lauren. We moved to Chappaqua in 2014 also for the same reasons as everyone, outstanding schools and really a great community. We have a second grader at Grafflin and also a kindergartner at Grafflin. And we really want to just reiterate what everyone is saying here tonight. You know, I think in normal times, it would be something we'd be calling in and talking about that reducing the number of teachers and increasing the class size would be something that isn't advised just given how important it is, you know, that first grade is in the development of everyone long-term. But especially given the circumstances that we're in right now. Obviously, no one could control the coronavirus and what it's, what it's making us all do. And I think the school district has done a phenomenal job of working under those circumstances. Feel terrible for the seniors, for example, and then really all the students and teachers that have to deal with this. But again, that's something we can't control. But one thing we can control, I think, is, is that class size next year. So understanding the circumstances that we're in and obviously the budget constraints that are potentially there. But this is something that I think is very, very important for this class and their early development that should carry on through the rest of their, their education.
Hey, thank you for your comments. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night. Next up, and this is our last hand up, is Jen Shim. Still have video on some other people.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Jen.
Hi, I'm Jen Shim. I think like many others on this call, I also have a kindergartner boy, Alex, that's at Grafflin. And I think just like many others, I just wanted to reiterate the, the class size going into next year. You know, I think initially, even before a lot of the coronavirus issues and concerns kind of hit and we saw the numbers going around, there was like a lot of concern just about a large number for, you know, incoming first grade class. I think, you know, with all of the other issues surrounding us today and with, you know, the kids not being in school for, you know, foreseeably the next couple of months and missing so much of kindergarten, I do think they're missing out on a lot of the, you know, the social skills, the academic that they really learn in the classroom that they're not getting today. So, you know, I know there are a lot of financial and budget constraints going on, but just like many of the others, I just wanted to raise my hand and put it out there for consideration. I also was not sure, right? So even, you know, worst case, if it does stay at three, right, there's 23 people. But then, you know, even after September, right, there will be many students moving into the district after the schools, the classes have already formed. So I don't even know kind of what happens if, you know, that many more kids come in, you know, say October, November, right? So I just feel like to make it, you know, as seamless as possible, to keep the classes smaller, right? I would just, you know, hope that we could just keep it up for consideration to keep the classes at four consistent to this year.
Okay, thank you so much. And I think we have one last person, which is Michael Jackson.
Can you hear us?
Ah, yes, we can hear you and see you now. So state your name and go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, great. Hi, my name is Sarah Jacobson. This is my husband, Michael Jacobson. We don't have a lot of substantive, anything to add other than to echo what everyone else has said earlier tonight. We also have a kindergartner at Grafflin in Ms. Parish's class. We're two working parents. We're doing our best, like a lot of other people, to help educate Asher during iLearning. It's obviously difficult. We also moved to Chappaqua over the summer. And so we're a perfect example of what a bunch of people have been talking about tonight about how people move sort of later and we can't really assess the class size. So we think it's really important and just want to add another voice to the crowd that we think that the class size should be kept at four teachers rather than three teachers and would urge you to reconsider.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments.
Thanks.
We have Amandeep, who had tried to get on before to see if we can fix the audio problem. Hi, we can see you. Let me see if we can hear you, Amandeep. No, we still can't hear you. I'm so sorry. Yeah, I don't know what the problem is, but we can't hear you. My apologies. Please send whatever you like to us. I'm sorry that we'll have to move on. Okay, sorry about that. Zalika Coleman.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, go right ahead. Thank you so much.
Great, thanks for having me. Good evening. I will be super, super quick. I just wanted to echo the concerns of the other kindergarten parents. Like most other parents, my family moved here from the city last year. And we have Peyton Coleman, who's in kindergarten. And like the other parents, she's been having an amazing, an amazing year so far. And along with just the concerns about the class size growing and knowing that instruction is more effective when classes are smaller and the bonds are better, what I do want to echo is the social impact that it would have. Peyton loves her kindergarten class. She's in Mrs. Parish's class. And if you let her tell it, her Mrs. Parish colleagues, her kid, her group of friends, they're, they're her favorite friends. And they're super, super close. And I'm concerned that in a larger class in first grade, that she would lose this bond that she has with her fellow classmates. So like all the other concerns, please do consider keeping the class size as it is. It's super, super important to her and the other kindergarten kids. And just being mindful that these are our youngest scholars and they are the most important. And they are losing a lot of instruction right now. And, you know, we thank you for all that you guys are doing and we hope that you guys keep this in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Bianca Cardinale. We can hear you, but we can't see you.
Oh, okay.
If you can turn it up, now we can see you. Okay, great. Just state your name and go right ahead. Thank you so much.
Sure. Good evening, Bianca Cardinale. My little girl, Milana, is in Grafflin in Mrs. Parish's class as well. And I'm just sort of getting on board with all the parents tonight also to ask you to consider to keep class sizes as they are. We actually moved during the summer to Grafflin, although we moved to Roaring Brook, but it was a surprise. So we can add to those numbers. And really, just like everybody else had mentioned, you know, it's a unique time in history for learning. And our kindergartner children are really missing out, as much as we try to do at home and as grateful as we are for all of the work that our district has provided and all of the support. I think now is really more of a time on thinking about how we are going to invest in them when they go to first grade rather than take away. So that's all. And again, thank you, everybody, for all of your hard work. I know it's a labor of love.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments. I think that ends our public comment for tonight. I don't see anything else. Adam, I thank you very, very much for monitoring that. I really appreciate it. And.
Can I just, you know how we can have like a discussion?
Yes, that's what I was just going to say, like, do we want to have a discussion? Because I thought there might be some things that you can clarify, given the comments tonight if you wish to.
Thank you. I just wanted to share, there was one comment about the reduction in speech in our speech staff. And we provide all the services that were required to provide under I A P. So this reduction is based on need. So I don't want members of the public to feel like we would reduce a position which would translate to reduction in services for kids that need that.
No, I would assume that since that was in the budget originally, that that was probably due to enrollment or decreasing numbers or need, that that's why we were able to reduce that. Is that correct?
Correct. I just, I didn't, I wanted to just loop back around to that comment, just to provide clarification.
Okay, I'm glad because I did have a question about that, that that was my assumption. So I'm glad that you clarified that.
I also want to just make a comment on three things. So first, I appreciate everyone's supportive commentary about iLearning and understanding the predicament that the district is in in terms of budgeting. So I appreciate the balanced approach that many of our families had when they had shared their comments tonight advocating for the annual section of grade one at Grafflin, but also understanding the position that we're in in terms of budgeting this year due to the economy. So, you know, the budget is a fluid process. We do make adjustments based on enrollment. That happens over the summer. But with that said, we're still in the development process, as we all know. So we'll take those comments under consideration as we move forward. So I do appreciate everyone taking time to, to provide some insights and their suggestions to our budget moving forward.
Okay, and I just wanted to, go ahead, Vicky, did you want to say something? We can't hear you, Vicky.
Sorry about that. I just want to quickly address something that someone mentioned, and rightfully so. Someone mentioned the federal CARES aid that will be apportioned to every state. Unfortunately, we just heard some, had some information today. The governor, in his budget, stated that state aid would be reduced by the amount of federal aid that we get. So that's just preliminary. So I just want to confirm that, you know, it's very unfortunate. But I believe that that's what, that's what's stated in the budget. So John, I don't know if you had, or Christine, or anyone, if you've had time to take a look at that.
I think we, you know, when we come around to a presentation, if that information is more readily available, we can provide that in the context of our April 15th presentation.
Yeah.
I was just going to jump in and say one last word on public comment because I know we have some attendees here that may not be usual attendees to our meetings. And, you know, I know they have to sit through discussions and some stuff they understand and they don't. The public comment, as some people know, but some don't, that our, our board meetings, they are our meetings that have to be held in public, but yet they are not public meetings. So just to explain that. And that is why public comment is actually not even required, although it's something that many boards do. We are, we are one of them. We are firm believers that we want to hear from the public. We always like to hear from the public. It is very common to have a, a three-minute rule. And yes, when we are in the, in-person meetings, we don't like to cut people off. So any decision we make tonight is, was in general to try and move this Zoom process through. I hope everyone bears with us. We obviously, even given the governor's order about board meetings and public, we did not have to poke up, do public comment during Zoom, but we wanted to and we're very, very appreciative that Adam found a way to work this out, that we would still get a visual on people, still allow people to comment. We do want to hear from people. If you end up getting cut off, we apologize. Those are our rules. We're trying to stick to the best we can under unusual circumstances. And we really do encourage everyone who either, if their audio didn't work, if they felt like they didn't get to say what they wanted to tonight, please know that we are available. You can phone us. You can email us. You can reach out to us. So that's all I wanted to say. Anybody have any other comments related to public comment? Okay, so we can move on to item number six, which is recommended action other. I am going to read a resolution. I am going to read a resolution and ask for a motion on this under item number six. Whereas, in response to the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, the governor of the state of New York has called upon each public school district to assure that for the period commencing on April 1st, 2020 through April 14th, 2020, all weekdays shall be designated as a student remote instructional day or student remote instructional days, excuse me, consistent with the district's continuity of learning plan. And whereas there has been a mandate placed upon New York State public school districts to continuously provide food services and childcare services in accordance with their plans as submitted to the New York State Education Department in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, now therefore be it resolved that the board hereby modifies the adopted 2019-2020 school district calendar by establishing the days of April 1 through April 14 as student remote instructional days, thereby changing April 6 through April 13 from spring recess days to student remote instructional days. And be it further resolved, in addition to implementing remote instructional days during each of the weekdays commencing on April 1st, 2020 and through at least April 14th, 2020, the district shall continue its childcare services and food services plan as submitted to the New York State Education Department while awaiting further direction from the New York State government officials. Can I have a motion to approve item number six? Hillary, is that Hillary? It's a little dark.
Yes, sorry.
It's just a little dark. That's okay. Can I have a second?
A second.
Okay, that's all. Any discussion on the resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Motion has passed. So notice of future meetings. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April 15 at 7:30 PM. This was originally the budget adoption meeting, but for recent stated earlier, that date will likely be pushed back. And our subsequent meeting to that is Tuesday, April 21st, 2020. That's an 8 AM BOSI's budget vote in election. And our meeting after that is Wednesday, May 6 at 7:30 PM. Can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at 10:26 PM?
I move to adjourn.
I will second. All in favor of adjournment? Okay.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, so much for tonight.
Thank you.